Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It is Monday, September the 20th, 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Invocation this evening will be given by the Pastor Steve Smolligan of Hope Church. Good evening, Pastor Steve.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. Scott said it was okay for me to hand out to you our program from this past summer. We were grateful to bring back worship on the Riverwalk, and we honestly believe there were approximately 850 people that came out on those three Sunday nights. So, and in the front cover, we specifically say we thank all our partnering churches, our city council, our generous sponsors, and our faithful volunteers. So again, from Hope Church and from all our churches, thank you for the support you've given over these years.
Thanks for doing that, and a lot of very positive comments from the community as well, so thank you.
All right, great. Would you pray with me? Almighty God, we greet you this evening. We acknowledge your existence and your rightful authority over the affairs of men. What is done in this place this evening is an echo of, a reflection of, your sovereign rule. Thank you for creating us in your image. Thank you for breathing the breath of your life into us. Thank you for entrusting to us the work of your hands. We live in a beautiful place. Many who visit here agree. We care about those who visit and those who live here. Thank you for this place that is South Haven. We pray for our schools. We pray for our businesses. We pray for organizations and individuals who seek to enhance the quality of our lives and that of our community. We pray for homes, rental properties, restaurants, gathering points, and places of worship. We pray tonight for open ears, clear heads, receptive hearts. May those who share do so gently and always with respect. Guide those who have been elected to serve as they consider items of business that, in the end, touch us all. Thank you for their willingness. Thank you for their faithfulness. Guide these men and women in the decisions to be made, especially those to be made tonight. And in these days, Lord, calm the waters. Calm the waters. Be God over the wind and the waves, the times and the seasons, and as you still the storm long ago, still the storms in us and in our day. We ask again that this community be yours, so that those who live here, who work here, who travel and visit here, will experience your blessing, your joy, your presence, and your peace. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. And again, thank you again for getting us started. And now if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. That takes us to the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on that? See none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, it's approved. That takes us to the consent agenda items A through F.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? See none, this is a roll call vote.
Arnold.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to old business. First up, we have the city council be asked to consider the following actions regarding the proposed rezoning of 850, 836, and 822 Indiana Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial to our 1A single-family residential district. So first, we need to hold a public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second to open the public hearing. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's open, very good. Travis, good evening.
Good evening, council members. This is the item that you saw before you at the last meeting. This is for 850, 836, and 822 Indiana. The proposed rezoning is to rezone this from I-1 Light Industrial to R-1A single-family residential. These parcels are sized such that this zoning would seem to make sense, as industrial use would likely require a degree of screening that would probably not be possible for these sorts of properties to provide. Additionally, this aligns with the master plan's vision, is with these three parcels being viewed as single-family in the future. So, council has any questions for me, I can try to answer them, otherwise, this is the public hearing portion.
Council's pleasure. Would you like to hear from the public first? Why don't we do that? Travis, just we might have some questions for you. At this point in time, what's open for public comment? If you have questions or comments, come on up, state your name, address, and you'll have up to five minutes to address us. All right, looks like got none. Motion to close.
I'll make a motion, close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion, second, to close the public hearing. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, it's closed, very good. Next. Oh, you're back, very good. City council will be asked to consider the adoption of the proposed rezoning of 850, 836, at 822 Indiana Avenue, from I-1 Light Industrial to R-1A single-family residential district.
I'll make a motion to rezone 850, 836, 822 Indiana Avenue, from I-1 Light Industrial to R-1A single-family residential district.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, we have a second. Council, questions? Comments? I think we've all seen this, it makes sense, it's not going to be used for anything but this, so if there's no other comments, we've got a motion, we've got a second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, it's approved. Thanks, Travis. All right, next. City council be asked to consider the following actions regarding the proposed rezoning of 229 Elkenberg Street, a property under the city's ownership, from I-1 Light Industrial to RM1 multiple-family residential district. First, we're going to hold a public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second to open a public hearing. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, it is open. Travis.
All right, well, the same as the last item. This is an item that was introduced by the council at the last meeting, except for a public hearing tonight, and so that's the purpose of this item. This item was brought to the planning commission. Planning commission's recommendation was to rezone this from I-1 Light Industrial to RM1 multi-family residential. The future land use map in the master plan contemplated this parcel as being used for either recreational or residential in the future. In either case, it recommends a rezoning to an appropriate zoning district to accommodate whatever use the council had determined to use it for. So, if council has any questions for me, again, I can try to answer them, otherwise, we can turn it over for the public hearing.
Council, would you like to hear from the public first at this time? Yep, thank you. All right, public, again, same as before, if you'd like to come up, questions, name and address, please, you'll have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Nancy Nat, and I live at the Factory Condos, right next door to this property that's being considered to be rezoned. There seems to be some confusion on whether the Overton site is contaminated, and I'm starting my comments tonight to say, according to the report, it is definitely contaminated with carcinogens that if inhaled or ingested can cause liver and other forms of cancer. Over the summer, the city properly posted this sign at the site, telling people to stay off the property, which I'm in agreement with. If people have questions regarding this report, please go to the website and read it for yourself. Before I'm cut off from making certain comments, this does have to do with rezoning, but there needs to be some context here. I live at the Factory Condos adjacent to this property, and we are still undergoing monitoring to remediate the contamination there. Recently, one of our residents, Glenn Pettenpole, has passed away from a rare form of liver cancer, and I am being monitored for a tumor on my liver as well. My question before the council tonight is to ask, why is contaminated property being rezoned as residential before a plan has been completed to know that this property can be cleaned up enough to support residential living? As tax-paying citizens, we need to see a plan of remediation that has been approved by the state of Michigan, Eagle Division, and a guarantee as part of the purchase agreement that the developer, Habitat Company, is not going to drop the ball and allow toxic exposure similar to what is happening next to us at the Trailside development. The city should commit to delay rezoning until there is a viable written plan approved by the state of Michigan that this property can be cleaned to support residential living and protect the citizens of South Haven from dangerous cancer-causing toxins. The city owes citizens this level of commitment. If your number-two priority is to have affordable housing in South Haven, I hope your number-one priority is to protect the health and safety of the citizens of South Haven. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, can you just at least share, I mean, we know the site has to be remediated, I want the public to always know that is, I mean, it has to be done, but we can't have a plan until, we obviously don't have a plan. Can you just speak to that? I mean, there's a sequence, I mean, we don't have a plan to apply for remediation because we don't have a plan.
That's correct. With many of the different brownfields we've worked on, typically, a developer will come forward, they have a plan that they'd like to do, and they have an understanding, then they go and they ask for a brownfield plan, because that's really how they target what they're looking for. Different uses call for different standards, and especially with this one, that's the progression. A rezoning is just an operation of changing the zoning here, that doesn't mean that they get to go out there and build tomorrow. There's many other different operations or different approvals that have to be done, and brownfield plan, which does exist on the site, which was done to facilitate the demolition on the property, could be tailored to deal with the remediation. And I do know that, and Ryan Kilpatrick is here, and he can also talk to, the MISHTA processes that are done to make sure that lands that are brownfield properties are cleaned up sufficiently for the state of Michigan's satisfaction, as well as anybody else's. There's many properties that are considered brownfields that have been used for housing all over the state of Michigan. Many, many properties that, and I can't state that enough, that were brownfields, that were the site of old factories, are now successful housing developments. So, that's...
And we have others in the area as well, including, trying to think, right down next to what was the station, that was one, I mean, that was an old, so there's some different ones even around town, so.
Just in, just around this map itself, there's two or three brownfields right there.
Well, historically, though, as far as the Factory Condos go, we were told that it was all right to live there, by the city. They approved it to go residential, and it...
I'll wait till she sits down, and then we're going to...
Absolutely.
And after we moved in, we found out that the contamination was a lot worse, was terrible, as a matter of fact, and it was never brought to our attention. As far as Overton goes, no one seemed aware of the level of contamination there until recently, and Trailside has been a constant problem with us having to go to Michigan Department of Environmental Quality to get things done properly there, and things still aren't being done properly. So, historically, I have a reason to feel very worried about this project. It's not just something that isn't historically been happening around here.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Sorry, you were going to say?
Oh, I was going to say that I think that there was a whole lawsuit pertaining to the developer about Factory Condos, where the city's role was that. I don't believe that Mr. Bertorelli, the developer at the time, ever saw a brownfield at that time, or ever disclosed to anybody that there was contaminants there. So, as for the city's culpability there, I can't really speak to that, but as to, I believe there was a whole lawsuit about the Factory Condos, and to that, I'll just leave that to speak for itself.
Sounds good. But just so everyone's crystal clear, there will be a brownfield, there will be cleanup, there will be nothing built there if it's not deemed to be safe for living. Period, end of story.
That's correct.
And we're talking about the rezoning right now, correct?
Correct, we are talking about rezoning right now. I'm just clarifying.
Mine's going to be very short, Lee Savec, 879 Monroe Boulevard. Just sort of to follow up on the contamination aspect of it, you know, I don't understand why we'd be thinking about rezoning, or especially, and later item on the agenda, of selling the property to a developer until we really do know how contaminated it is. I think we're leaving the city open to lawsuits. I'm reading a very interesting book on Flint, Michigan, and they were told by the CDC, by everybody, that the water was absolutely fine until all these people and babies started dying of lead poisoning. So I think that, you know, it ends up that we sell the property to Habitat, they don't do a good job of cleaning it up, and we have middle or low-income people living there, and we're giving them contaminated soil to build on. I think we can do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. First, you did get the email from Mark Hamburg from earlier today. I'd just like to clarify that. I believe he sent it.
Earlier today, I didn't get it.
Okay. So I will be reiterating what he said. The rezoning of this property to RM1 is not consistent with the surrounding areas. It does not have, the structures will not be similar, and the terms of use and structural character will be different, that it's tantamount to spot zoning. It's putting in high-density housing in a low-density community. It does not need the transition zoning that's usually associated with RM1. There is no industrial. You just rezoned the last industrial to R-1A. So, and a few months ago, you rezoned the other industrial to R-1A. There is no need for any transition period to support an RM1 district on this property. The master plan layout for Overton also has residential low-density. The fairest interpretation of the housing market has the same. Without restrictions on density with this rezoning, it is spot zoning. With regard to the cleanup, I just have to add some things. Yes, you say that you will ensure the land is properly cleaned, but it's the process by which it's cleaned. As you all know, I'm very process-oriented. I like to make sure i's are dotted and t's are crossed, and I call people out when they are not. With the Trailside, the city, a concern was raised to the city that Trailside was not operating properly with that contaminated soil. The city called the developer, the developer said, yes, I am, and the city said, oh, great, just wonderful. So then I called Eagle, and Eagle said, yep, I spoke to the developer, everything's fine. And I said, well, let me tell you what I'm seeing. She's like, oh. The next day, fencing was delivered to be put up. So you can't just sell the land and wash your hands of it without restrictions to ensure not only that the ground is cleaned up, but the process is done properly to protect the citizens in the surrounding area. So back to the rezoning. With that, the guidelines, the ordinances, allow a traffic study to be required, and this has not been done, and with the high-density, it's ignoring a concern until it's too late. Without a density restriction, it is spot zoning, and it's improper to do rezoning to RM1 in this property that is surrounded by low-density housing.
Thank you for your comments. And again, just, you know, topics such as traffic studies and whatnot will be undertaken at a later time, as appropriate. Nick, do you want to speak to the topic of spot zoning, or Kate, I mean, we've kind of discussed that.
Sure, I can speak to spot zoning. Spot zoning is when you have an inconsistent use or zoning district surrounded by typically a lesser intense use. Here we have, this property is immediately across the street from the same zoning district, and it does in fact transition to industrial if you go further south, south of the Factory Condo block, there's industrial there. So, and it's also master planned for multifamily uses. So all those factors combined, I think the chance of a spot zoning talent are extremely low for this rezoning.
Correct, and across the street, directly to, I would be the south, the plan for there was calling for higher density for that phase that's currently not developed. I mean, that's what's been called out?
I believe that's correct.
Quite a while.
The more important thing from a spot zoning talent is that it's literally the same zoning district. It would make a contiguous stretch of RM1.
Correct, I'm saying that's already what's called out, was to the south.
Correct. Yes.
So, okay, so I just wanted, just so people are aware.
Yes, it's contiguous, and that's why that map is up there showing that it's to, not only to the west, it's to the south. So this is not just a, this is not the only color brown that would be up there.
Right, right. So I just want people to be aware, this is not the only one. Okay. Other public questions on the rezoning?
Hello, excuse me, hello. Kate Inklebrecht, 125 Elkenberg Street. I live in the Factory Condos. I'm here one more time to please ask you to stop the motion that you're at right now until you know for sure what's going on with the contamination there, until you know for sure what type of development Habitat is proposing, whether it meets the city's needs or whether it meets Habitat's needs. What seems to be a continuing theme that is never addressed is that Habitat needs to build so many units in order to make a profit. The city should not be concerned with that. They should be concerned with the affordable housing that you've been looking for, for a number of years. And every time you take one more step down this road, such as the rezoning, it appears to be committing us again to Habitat, who is not doing, or is not proposing to do what the city needs, but doing what Habitat needs. And I feel that until it can be resolved, that no action should be taken as far as the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And again, this is just rezoning, this by no means commits us to anything. So, just so everyone's clear. Very good, good evening.
Good evening.
Pastor Joe.
811 Indiana Street. I just stood to say that what I've heard over the last several meetings does not seem like we're beholden to Habitat at all. So I just want to make that known for people that may be just coming in and hearing this conversation for the first time. It has been complete transparency to me, and I've been watching and been a part of these meetings for almost three years now, and Habitat does not have this city handcuffed when it comes to this project.
Thank you. You are correct.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I agree with Kay and Nancy about the environmental concerns. When I built my house in Trailside, it cost $30,000 to move the soil from my basement to the environmental landfill in Zeeland. And figuring out the density of Overton, even with all the 144 units, figuring they're only going to be going maybe five feet deep, figuring out the cost per cubic yard, it's going to cost about three-quarters of a million dollars to remove all that dirt that has to go for that project. And eventually, it's going to come out of our tax money, because I guess there's a pool built up, and eventually developers go to the brownfield thing, and they get their money back eventually, whatever it is. But that land is contaminated, and the city finally put up signs last, I don't know, a few months ago, even though it's been contaminated for years. And the density, we still have never talked about the density. I mentioned this last meeting. Habitat knew our comments in April and in June. They never changed the layout yet. They never gave you any alternatives. They said they could make money, get loans with 60 units. So build 60 units for rent, 40 units to purchase on townhomes, you have less density, you have more open space, more green spaces, more playgrounds. But again, I hate to say, but Habitat is still running this program, and that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Aaron Cobb, 914 Center Street. And I'm sitting, listening about the contamination, and I have a question, and I don't want to act ignorant of what's going on, but last year, I believe last year, or year before last, when they had all that equipment over there, said it cost over $6 million, what were they cleaning up? I mean, what were they doing? Where, do the city know if the land's still contaminated, or what were they cleaning up with all that equipment over there, said it cost over $6 million? They were there for about six months.
Yeah.
They had huge equipment, they dug a lot of wells in the ground, and I think they had to move the trail over, and they said they were cleaning up contamination there. What did that consist of?
That was over at the neighboring property, the Factory Condos.
That was that property.
Yeah. They were extracting...
It's a plume of trichlorethylene, TCE, plume of trichlorethylene, and it's underneath, about 30 feet down behind the Factory Condos, and that's what they were remediating there. It was the state's cleanup, and yes, they did kind of move the trail over so they can get as many wells as they needed to, to get into that area. So they got as much out as they could. There was a video that the state did, kind of explaining what they did, what was left, and that's on our website, and it's still up there if anyone would like to watch it, kind of explaining what went into there and what's left.
Okay, one more question. Have any testing been done on the Overton property, and the city council have any knowledge of what kind of contamination there are, how much?
Speak to it.
There was a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 that's been done on the property, as well as a BEA, so they have an idea of what's out there. And so all the reports have been done and filed with the state, so they have an idea of what's out there. I don't believe, and I do believe that they did sink some wells, or at least get some wells to understand what's down there, but not to the 30-foot down for the TCE plume. But all that also is on our website for anybody to go and look at.
Okay. So it would have to be approved by the state before any construction could be done there, right?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Whole plan.
David Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. Mainly, I just wanted to make the comment on Overton being out of character with the neighborhood, and I guess that's a comment that I don't really understand, because seems to me the Factory Condos are a big multi-unit, multi-family unit, as this project would be, so I don't understand that concern. And then the other one is density, and I'm not sure if that's a part of the zoning situation. If it is, I'll address it, otherwise, I'll save my comments for another time on density.
That would come later, then.
Pardon?
That would come later.
Later?
But you gentlemen have, and lady, have entered into my rice bowl. For those who are not Vietnam vets, you'll have to check it up in the history. I want to just go into the history of the neighborhood regarding the density, okay? And the recent context of what you're doing with this added number of people there. Just recently, we've had a homicide there, which everybody's aware of. And two weeks ago, coming home from dinner with a companion, I couldn't even cross the street because you had impeding traffic issues on that street late in the evening. The block, the street was blocked. My companion was under duress and somewhat frightened. And I was going to take photos. I have a security background, and this is what's going on in that neighborhood, and you want to add more to it? And that happens in the day, and it happens at night. It's impeding traffic. I don't know if the city is working it or patrolling it, and I only live a block from there. That's that piece. The other piece is with the pond that was there. There were two houses there in the previous development. One of those houses, the owner, the former owner, is now fighting cancer. The city took over management of that pond across from the factory and let it back up and flood those two houses. That's why they lost the HOA, and Trailside bought it up. These are the contexts of what you're doing here that nobody seems to have an idea of. And I'm bringing that to the attention of the council. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Deborah Mahone. I live at 19 Kalamazoo Street. Now, I am in agreement with those who are talking about the contamination. You know, how do we know what's going to be in the air when they remove that dust? Because I've lived there the majority of my life. The house I live in is the home that my father built around the corner. My uncles built their homes. My grandfather built their homes. On the street that I live, two streets over, one is named after my uncle, the other is named after my grandfather. When I was a child, there was National Motors, there was Overtons, there was Everett's Piano Company and Bonilumina, which my father worked. Now, when they tore National Motors down and Everett's down, they, we, the community then kept asking what kind of contamination is being put in the air. We never got a response from that, never did. They even held a meeting at the church in which my late uncle pastored. We never got a response. Here we go again, Overtons. If you don't live there, it seems to me, I'm just talking for myself, it seems to me it doesn't really bother you because you're not going to breathe that air because you don't live there. And to the gentleman in the back, that homicide was not from the people in that neighborhood. I lived there. That was from people coming in out the neighborhood. And the people who blocked the street are not the people who live there. They're young people coming in from out of the town into South Haven. And I have a problem with people perceiving something that's not correct. Those are people that come there, and it's not just the neighborhood. People drag race. I live on Kalamazoo Street. Everybody's flying up and down that street, from the tourists to everybody, is flying up and down that street. And I'm fearful that somebody's child is going to get hit, or an older person's going to get hit and killed. At the stop signs that you put on Elkenberg and Kalamazoo, they fly through that stop sign. So, let's, you know, if we're going to do something, if we're going to talk, talk what you know, not your perception of what you don't know. And we really do need to know what type of contamination is in there before that dust is built up, because we who live there are going to be inhaling that. And if you don't live there, it doesn't seem like it's your concern because you won't be breathing that air.
Thanks for your comments. And again, as we talk about this, rezoning, we're not at a brownfield plan. That would require specific guidance from the state. There are remediation plans, so that would come at a later time.
Am I Goodwin, 1012 Kalamazoo Street. Oh, man, here we go again. First of all, I would like to say, to speak to some of the other comments that I heard. I thank the council for putting in a four-way stop in that area. I believe it's around Humphrey Street. And regarding the 229 Elkenberg Street property, years ago, I rented a small space in that Overton property. And that was around 2000, I want to say, '06, '07, somewhere in there. And years later, I haven't contracted any cancer or anything like that from being in the space. Just to shed light upon that, I do believe with the proper research, as the city council has stated, that everything should go in accordance with the state, and they're not going to be able to build anything. To speak to the war veteran, he said that he was a veteran and that the streets were blocked, and he mentioned things about the homicide. Now, I am one that's from South Haven in this community. I walk up and down the street. I ride my bicycle. I ride my scooter, drive my vehicle. I own three other properties in this, in this area. And it, you do have a lot of outside people coming into South Haven. So, I would be remiss if I didn't get up and say something to defend the actions of our young people and of our police department, which has been doing the fine job patrolling and doing a fine job with communication with the residents in that area and walking the beaten path and doing the best that they can do. And in accordance with the city council, we know that it's been a lot of special events held around in that area, and I think everything has been going good thus far. Now, regarding the site with a lot of the people that's going to be there, I do think it's going to be a lot of people, but I think if it's, if it's planned accordingly, the traffic study gets done, I think it will go fine because at the end of the day, people still need somewhere to live. So, I hope this, this process gets done with careful study, uniqueness, and guidance from what the, how the pastor prayed at the opening of this service. If I offended anybody, I stand on my word. You can talk to me later, and may God bless you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Pam Frazier. I stay at 723 Ericoi in South Haven. And I just wanted to get up and say something to the council. I've heard all these, I've gotten up before. I know you guys remember me. I just wanted to reiterate what I said before. We need to move forward with this project. You've already told us that nothing will be done until the site is cleaned and deemed safe to build on. So, with that being said, it's time for us to get affordable housing in South Haven. Our citizens, our residents, we deserve affordable housing. If we can, are good enough to live, work here, we should be good enough to live here. I've heard all the stories, the densities and all that other stuff, but we need affordable housing. I have a cousin who just moved here from Utah. She graduated from South Haven Public Schools, got married. Her husband is a serviceman, and he's getting deported out. So, he moved his family back here so they, you know, so he, she wouldn't be in Utah by herself. She couldn't find nowhere to live. She's living with her mama in Bangor because there's, she's, she makes too much money for the low income, not enough money for, you know, over here on the north side. So, she has nowhere to live. She had to live with her parents in Bangor because we have no place for her to live here in South Haven, and that is very sad. Let's move on with this project because, like you've said, nothing's going to be done until it's cleaned up. And let me also, I can't, can't leave without saying this, please don't label, label our resident, our, our community, our neighborhood that is unsafe. We, you know what? South Haven is a very, very safe place all over the neighborhood. Every, every place is safe. And if we want to talk about homicide, the last homicide, I believe, was at the beach. And, 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 am I right? So, we're not going to go there. We're not here to name call or anything like that. We're here to get something done, and we need affordable housing in South Haven so we can stop sending our people who work in the district to other towns to live because they can't afford to live in South Haven. Let's clean up that property and get this thing, this project done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else on rezoning? Good evening, Darlene.
Good evening. My name is Darlene Sanders. I live at 322 Spencer Avenue, and I would like to see this project go on as well because I know what it's like to lose a house. I lost a house over back taxes, and everywhere I went, they had a year's waiting list. Sometimes you don't have that kind of time to wait to get another place instead of moving. I would have moved to Lawton, you know, to be with my mother, had to transfer back and forth for working this and that. We need this. And I want to talk about this murder. I was there. We had a plan in place, a safe thing, that we be out there and we watch the kids. We have certain hours, we feed the kids, we watch the kids. So, we was there when the shooting happened, and they were not from here, they didn't live here. They were from out of town. And that could have happened anywhere. But we need affordable housing. There are too many people struggling and to have to move out of town, like she said, with different relatives, have to transport their kids here for school and have to run back and forth. We need it because the ones that we have, they have a year or two waiting list. You don't have that kind of time. We have a lot of people that need somewhere to live, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Linda Schubel, 125 Van Buren. I just need some clarification. Is the contamination on that whole piece of property going to be cleaned up first? Then Phase 1? Then Phase 2? Then Phase 3? Habitat did not say that. Habitat, when they spoke with us several months ago, they're going to do Phase 1. They want to get it all rented. Then they'll proceed to Phase 2, and then 3. That isn't cleaning up the site until they get to Phase 2. First, they have to clean it all up in entirety.
And again, the brownfield plan would need to be established. The state would have to approve it. That would be part of the process. Is there anything I missed in there? It would have to be, that's going to be part of the whole process.
She is correct. The proposal is to clean it in phases. They would be submitting that proposal to the state, and it's, the purchase agreement that the council reviewed last week would make it a contingency of the sale, that the state approve the, the plan for the entire site before any piece of the site is sold. But the, but the part about, you know, the cleaning and phasing, phases, that is correct. My understanding is the state has protocols for separating contaminated portions of the site from non-contaminated portions. I believe there would be fencing that would all be detailed in the plan. Again, the plan's not prepared yet, but that's my understanding of what their proposal is going to be to Eagle.
Okay.
What about the contamination in the air?
Again, there's state standards for those types of things, and this, anything they propose will be subject to state review.
State review, exactly. So, if it's something that they viewed as airborne, there'd be water, there'd be water. But anyway, so that's.
Trailside has not been watched very carefully. Why should we feel confident that this will be?
Again, that's, thank you. Kate, you want to make any comments just about Eagle and your discussions with Eagle?
The city is not, doesn't have regulatory authority over brownfields. That's where the state has jurisdiction. So, I've heard some of the comments tonight that the city did not do anything. We have reached out to Eagle. We have been in contact with them to let them know that there have been concerns about the, the work over there, and they have come out, and they have made site visits out there. So, we have put Eagle in contact with, with ongoing work, and that's what they do. They have a site, they have a, I'm sorry, an office in Kalamazoo. They can make routine visits should they like to. They are the regulatory agency for those kind of work, for that kind of work.
Correct. And they have the ability to shut down a project if something's not being done properly. If they come out and they see something that's not done properly, they have the ability to shut that project down instantly. Any other comments on rezoning? Seeing none? Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion seconded, close the public hearing. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, it's closed. All right. Next. Can I get back where we were? We were asked to consider the adoption of the proposed rezoning of 229 Elkenberg Street from I-1 Light Industrial to RM1 Multiple Family Residential District. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider the adoption of the proposed rezoning of 229 Elkenberg Street from I-1 Light Industrial to RM1 Multi-Family Residential District.
I'll second.
Very good. We've got a motion. We've got a second. Council discussion?
Yes, I'll speak.
Please do.
From what I'm hearing from a lot of the people in the audience tonight, I thank everyone for their opinions and their coming up and speaking. One thing I'm hearing is that we still are in need of housing there. Regardless of the other items brought up tonight regarding environmental, I don't think it's going to get cleaned up if it does nothing, if we do nothing. We need housing, and I think one of the best ways to help pay for getting it cleaned up is to do something with the property. That's yet to be determined. Density's yet to be determined. So, that's why I'll be voting to turn this into a multi-family residential district because of the surrounding area. I don't see a lot of industrial around it. I don't think industrial's coming back. That's why I'm voting to rezone it to multifamily. How that's going to look is to be determined, so that's why I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, if I got my numbers right, which I'm very close, about 20 years ago, our population was 6,300. About 10 years ago, it was 4,300. The last census was taken last year. It's down to 3,900. The number of students in our schools have slowly gone down. It's more than just a simple population. There's less people having children. But the bottom line is our town is shrinking in population. At some point, and we're starting to see it this past summer, we're starting to see restaurants can't hire enough people. We're seeing businesses having a hard time. We have a businessman, gentleman here with three businesses. Everyone in this room should be concerned about the population of our town and year-round residents. One of the best cures for year-round residents is affordable housing. Just take two towns in this state right now, Ann Arbor and Kalamazoo. Not only do they think it's important, the citizens voted with their tax dollars and raised a tax just to pay for a fund for affordable housing. No one's asking anyone to reach into their pocket tonight and pay for anything, but two cities have asked residents to reach in their pocket and pay for affordable housing. That's how important it is in Kalamazoo and Ann Arbor. And our governor has said she is going to give, and I forget the number, $100 million or something to affordable housing. It is all over the country, a lack of affordable housing. How can we sit here and not realize that we don't need it? I agree, there should be concern about the land and the quality of it. They're going to handle it, I think. When we talk about density, we have a gentleman here can address that. When we talk about the population around that area, we have a gentleman that can talk about that. And I would love to see a little bit of crowds in this town. I'd love to see kids lined up on the streets, walking to that high school, instead of it looking empty a good part of the year. looking empty a good part of the year. So I don't know how we can turn our back on this. Let's just figure out how to make it right. Let's hold Habitat to the fire to do it right, but don't throw out this whole program over some concerns. I think it's the right thing to do, and I'm a resident, and I want more people in this town year-round, and this could be one of our saving graces. Thanks.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Judge.
So I feel like I'm in a unique situation here on City Council because I'm also on the Planning Commission, and I know my experience on the Planning Commission is it's very difficult to try to come up with a, reviewing a plan for whatever kind of development you're looking at if you don't know what your zoning is in that area. So it's important to me that we get the zoning established because you don't know what kind of mark you're trying to hit as far as development if you don't know what it's zoned for. And if you look at the different zoning options, if you're not going to go with RM-1, you're going to go with something that has much less options associated with it. Most of the other zoning options are just single-family, and with an RM-1 zoning, you can have, as trail site has done, you can have a single-family on an RM-1, but you can't have multi-family on an R-1A. So I'm supportive of this, and I know from my experience on Planning Commission, Planning Commission will take into account the surrounding neighborhood, and will take that into account when they review whatever site plan is finally brought before them. That's it.
Good thinking. Anybody else? I'll just say, I am also in support of rezoning of this property. Having been involved in the process for quite a while, being familiar with the property across the street, if you're over in that area, you're seeing some development of single-family homes. The vision for even the property across the street, it was a combination of single-family homes, higher density. Across from that, we have industry. So that's what this area, I mean, this makes sense for this location to be rezoned, so I am going to vote in favor of that. The other issues, the other concerns, the contaminations, we hear you, we will absolutely make sure that this site is safe to be built on. We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call this, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Schleck.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Are we good to go on to the next item, or do people need a break?
Good.
Good. All right. Next. City Council will be asked to consider the following actions regarding a proposed ordinance providing a property tax exemption and service charge in lieu of taxes. And before we actually do the public hearing, Kate, we've got some information we're going to present first.
Sure. So the reason why we're having this public hearing tonight is obviously we set it at our last meeting on September 7th. So we have to, by law, have our public hearing because we set that date. We are not actually asking for the council to have any action on the pilot ordinance, but we do have Ryan Kilpatrick, he's our housing consultant. I wanted to just kind of have him come up to speed as to why a MISTDA requires a pilot agreement. What is a pilot agreement? What is, what goes involved in that? And just kind of explain to the council, as well as folks at home and folks here in the audience, once again, what does all that entail? Just kind of giving a primer once more as to why we, why this is, why this is, why we were doing this.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for the time. Real quickly, when any project is proposed under the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program... Thank you. I was about to ask if you could hear. If any project is proposed under the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program, it's a requirement under the MISTDA standards, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, that the local unit of government adopt a payment in lieu of tax. And the reason for that is by allowing for the tax credit-funded housing project. What we're getting is a federally funded housing development that has rent restrictions that are tied to incomes. And so what that means is the developer is taking a concession in terms of what they could charge as a market rate rent, as opposed to what they will charge under those rent restriction guidelines. And because they're taking a concession in terms of the amount of rent that they're capable of accepting, they cannot viably pay for the full freight ad valorem tax rate. Typically, what happens is that full ad valorem tax rate would undermine the project, meaning the project couldn't afford to service the debt obligation that it has to the state or fund those tax credit obligations. And so essentially, what the state is asking local municipalities to do is to partner with the state, is to say, we need you to do two things. One, approve the site plan as approvable under your local zoning ordinance, and two, approve the payment in lieu of tax. And so that is your contribution to the project to ensure that those housing units can be affordable for the long term. The state's contribution is to allocate the tax credits through the federal government and to provide, typically, they provide the senior debt allocation. So all tax credit-financed units will have debt, just like when we take out a mortgage on our house. These investments have debt that typically amounts to somewhere between 60% to 70% of the overall cash flow goes to pay off debt service. And so the reason that they ask for that payment in lieu of tax is without that payment in lieu of tax, the development would not be capable of paying that debt obligation back to the state. So that's your partnership with the state. Now, there's a second element that we've been talking about, which is a municipal services agreement. And the reason we talk about doing a payment in lieu of tax and a municipal services agreement together is because that municipal services agreement is your way of saying, the city wants to be a partner in this project, and we want to make housing affordable for the long term, and we want to make sure that we're capable of financing the services necessary to support that investment. So whether it's sewer and water, or police and fire, or its staff at City Hall, or its enhancements to downtown, all of those things improve the quality of life and the access to services for those new residents. So the municipal services agreement is your ability to say, we recognize that we need to provide a break on the ad valorem tax rate, and you're willing to do that, but what you want to do is add that 1%, maybe 1.5% additional municipal services agreement fee on top of the payment in lieu of tax that goes directly towards those municipal services. And now, both of those things are negotiable. MISTDA allows for a range of a payment in lieu of tax, and typically, what we would advise is that you really look at what can the municipality afford in terms of your rate reduction, and what are you getting in return? Are you getting the project that you had hoped for, that you had asked for with your RFP, or that you had zoned for? And are you serving those target markets that you've been designing for? And if you're getting a benefit, a public benefit to the community, then typically a lower payment in lieu of tax is advisable to offset the costs of the development team. Now, one of the things that I want to make sure to make clear here tonight is even though we have a for-profit developer in the mix, what we aren't capable of doing in today's environment based on the way that federal funding flows for affordable housing is we're not able to bring in a nonprofit developer that would operate in a manner different from a for-profit development group. So even if we brought in a nonprofit developer to do the exact same project, if there are people concerned about the developers making too much money on this project, a nonprofit developer has the exact same fee structure. So when we issued the RFP, RFQ, we did seek out some nonprofit development groups, and typically, they weren't able to make those numbers work because they didn't have the large enough portfolio. So the for-profit developers that did propose tended to have a larger portfolio that they could balance this project against. So that being said, I just want to be clear that the way that these projects are structured, there is a developer fee that is earned at the time the project is completed, and then there are limited cash flow from rental rates. But typically, a developer does not make a significant amount of money on those rental rates because they're obligated by MISTDA to keep those rental rates relatively low compared to where the market is. So happy to answer any questions about any of what I just described.
So if I've got this right, and Kate could probably answer as well as you, the payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot, I understand, but the municipal services agreement, if my understanding is right, Kate, and maybe you know Ryan, that we have, I suggested it, council seemed to like it, we proposed it, it's my understanding Habitat has agreed to it. Is that correct?
That's correct. So that item is not being brought tonight, but we did in the last two weeks talk about that with them. They have agreed to do it. It would be a 1% municipal services agreement and a 2% pilot totaling 3% altogether. But with that structure, a larger percentage of it goes to the city, and this agreement specifically calls for that money to be used for municipal services to provide to the property, police services, emergency services, that type of, that type of thing. So yes, we've reached agreement as to that. It's not being brought tonight because of Habitat's request to kind of delay their application to MISTDA, but when all the other agreements come back, that one will be coming with it.
Can you, the residents have brought up certain concerns over and over and over again. Fair enough, fair concerns. I'd like you to say it because we get looked at as politicians. The city gets looked at as staff, and maybe they don't completely trust them. So can you, one more time, say about, talk about the density, because you were talking, and I got the numbers here, but I'd rather it come from you, how this project, the way it's written, is actually well within the guidelines, better than the guidelines on density, and also on parking? Can you address that?
Sure. So just to be clear, every local municipality has their own guidelines as it relates to density, so your local zoning will rule. But what I would say is this is a very typical garden-style apartment complex. It is less dense than a lot of projects that we have been working on in other municipalities. There are also embedded in this project more amenities related to green space and proximity to public parks that have already been constructed. So I think in a lot of ways, this project provides more access to amenities than typical projects of this kind. In terms of total number of units per acre and parking spaces per unit, it's very much on par with what we would normally support and encourage a local municipality to support. It's important to recognize that a lot of the households that are looking for this type of housing are single adults. Typically, what we're finding is somewhere around 2/3 of households in a LIHTC project are going to be single adults or two adults with no kids. Roughly 1/3 are going to be parents with kids, so I would anticipate that that's going to be about the mix of households in terms of how we think about funding for schools and dollars per pupil. Those will be your opportunities more than likely. But the other thing that we notice with these projects is a majority of these households own fewer motor vehicles per person than do the rest of us at large, right? So typically, we call this induced demand. So if I buy a house with a three-stall garage, I'm much more likely to buy a third car because I have a place to park it and because I have the money and can afford it. If I buy a one, or if I rent a one-bedroom apartment that comes with one parking space, I'm far less likely to have a second car. So oftentimes, the way that the project is structured, if the management group says you get one parking space that comes with your unit, and if you'd like a second parking space, there's a fee that comes with that, there's an incentive built in that encourages a renter not to have a second car. And those are always opportunities that can get baked into these projects. So typically, I would say what you're, what you have seen to date in terms of the draft preliminary site plan that's been proposed is pretty much on par with what we would normally see.
I've got other questions, but they'll come later. Don't need to go through it tonight. Okay, Kate, you want to also just kind of update us on, before we get into the public hearing part, just some of the staff, well, I mean, what you've been discussing with Habitat?
Yes, so...
Request, some of the council's concerns, we've been kind of going back and forth, so...
Sure. So I think it's in, it is in the agenda that Habitat has put a letter on there that we are continuing to work on the development agreement, but Habitat does want to go through the zoning process, so they are going to be aiming for the April 1 LIHTC application, so we are going to be looking towards that, but we are continuing to have our conversations, Nick, Ryan, myself, on city staff, so we're working towards that. As for other things that we've been talking about, the density, as George rightly pointed out, this will have to go through zoning and those approvals, as well as the traffic study and all those other things, will have to go through that process at that time. Zoning is the process that will have to, that many of the concerns that have been raised tonight would have to be aired out at the Planning Commission during site plan review and PUD application. So with that being said, here, we were just talking about the pilots, and this is just that one portion. When we come back, we'd like, we would be bringing a, I'm sorry, the development agreement, municipal services, and those other kind of things.
Sounds good. And I know there have been a variety, I mean, we've, council, we've heard concerns regarding, are we hitting our workforce numbers? So based on that request and some of the concerns at this point in time, we'll hold a public hearing because that's required by law, but as for item B, to consider the motion to postpone, I really don't need to seek a motion tonight. So if that's fair to this group, I really will get the public hearing done.
So we're going to hold a public hearing on something that's not going to be taken up?
I'm confused, too.
We have to hold the public hearing by law.
Right. So we're going to hold that?
Yep.
But we're not going to have a motion on item B?
We're not ready on B.
So we're going to skip that, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
We're going to get through A. We have to do that by law.
And what's our reason for skipping it?
As they're just saying, we're not ready.
Counsel, or Kate?
Habitat.
Right. We'll bring our, we're going to finalize some other concerns. We had some other, some information that council had asked about what other places in town have received a pilot, what kind of, what kind of services, what kind of payments the city has received for other pilots, as well as the municipal services agreement. As Attorney Curtis Hill has noted, we've gotten an agreement that we'd like to bring forward for municipal services and what that would go for. I know there's concerns about whether or not that would pay for garbage, which it would not, but for ambulance service, fire service, and police services, we'd like to make sure that council has all of those details before they make a decision on the ordinance, as well as the municipal services agreement.
So to simplify this for myself and the public, then, the reason we don't want to have a consideration of a motion on item B is because we won't be considering a purchase agreement tonight, and we don't want to do a payment in lieu of taxes until we have a purchase agreement, correct?
That's correct.
That's it in a nutshell.
That's correct, and there's been other people, other members who have asked for more information as to what the pilot goes into and what other, what other pilots have been done in the city. So without that information, some have explained that they're not ready to make a decision on that ordinance tonight.
So we'll take this up after we approve a purchase agreement someday?
That's correct, or concurrently.
Probably be simultaneously.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. It's still going forward. We've just got to get a few things taken care of. So, I mean, again, we can, the motion, the second one's just a consider motion to postpone. I was just trying to make sure the public goes aware before they're making comments that we will not be seeking something for that motion tonight.
Can the purchase agreement have a separate piece to it, which is the pilot and the other part, the 1%? Can we do those in two pieces so tonight we could vote on the purchase agreement without the other piece? Or does it all have to be one?
Yeah, and that's not even on tonight. Tonight, we were looking at an ordinance to basically postpone to the next meeting.
Do we have the option tonight not to postpone?
No. There's not a purchase agreement. So we're saying, and Habitat said, they're not ready, and I think there's, again, we've had enough concerns of this group regarding, are we hitting our workforce numbers, to say, let's just make sure we get this thing right. So we're still doing housing, we just have to make sure we get it right, and Habitat was in agreement. So I just wanted, before we get into the public hearing, to make sure that they kind of heard that so we don't make it too difficult.
Right. And so like I, like I just, I guess when we just talked, is that the pilot agreement would be coming back at the same time as the development agreement, as well as the municipal services agreement. There's been concerns raised as to what is... There's been concerns raised as to what is going to be paid in the pilot versus other pilot agreements that have been done in the city. And council, other members have said that they'd like to hear, see that information before they vote on an agreement tonight. And they would like to make that decision before they make a decision on this pilot agreement tonight.
Correct.
And you mentioned it, that in talking to Habitat, they were happy to not meet the October deadline, though they're willing to push back.
That's correct.
To continue to work with us, help answer our questions, and not rush the process.
That's correct. And I think that they, as you can read in their letter, they'd like to seek their zoning approvals first as part of that, as it probably, it will give them additional points in the application process.
I have one other question. In us doing this, how far are we going to be pushed back? Because we, I mean, we've heard the voices of the people who are looking for housing. I mean, how long is that going to be, Mayor?
Well, I think at this point, we're, they would...
If we're pushing back, and I think I heard Kate say, April.
That's just one of the grants, would be April.
That would be the next grant cycle. So that'll, that's realistically the next time we'd be able to put something forward. But that said, we should be able to by then have clarification on the workforce numbers to make sure we're getting those numbers. We've all seen the numbers. I mean, I've raised that concern. I'm not still convinced the current mix that we were about to look at is hitting those workforce numbers based on the types of people. So anyway, that's why we're not ready.
So if everything falls into place, like you're saying, then are we still looking to proceed in the spring?
I absolutely, we're, we're full steam ahead.
I think what they're looking for is, is going forward with zone, or not zoning, but planning commission, they'll take a plan, correct?
That's correct.
And they'll work on that. The only thing that's being delayed is their MISTDA application, which isn't available again until next April, from what I understand.
That's correct.
That's what's being pushed back, but yet meanwhile, we can work on the zoning or get the plan out there, the density and all those things can happen to move forward, once we have a purchase agreement, correct?
That's correct. So really, we're just, we're just delaying, just a couple meetings as to what we, what the number of approvals that would be done. So they are going to be seeking their planning approvals, but that also means that they're still going to be seeking their approvals with this board in advance. So the April 1 deadline is just the MISTDA application, but we intend to have things wrapped up in a number of months in advance of that date.
And the reason I'm asking all these questions, because I'm sure once we walk out of here, people are going to ask a lot of questions, saying, is it, is it going to happen? Is it, you know, is it not going to happen? And where are we at? So I think that we need to be really clear with the public, because I've heard us, I heard people say, we're not transparent, we're not being honest. So that's what I'm saying. We need to give them clarity, what is really going on. So that's why I'm asking the questions.
Well, I think it's also important at this point in time, too, to remind everyone that even if they apply in April, and Mr. Patrick can help me, they may get turned down.
That's correct.
And they'll have a certain period of time in that purchase agreement to reapply, correct?
Yes.
Up to two or three times. So it could be, it may be two years, correct? It could be.
That's correct. I mean, it's...
Depending on their application.
Right.
So, I mean, just because they apply for it doesn't mean they'll get it the first time, because next year is a new cycle for new rules, the way I understand it, so...
Right. It's an incredibly, Ryan can probably speak to this, it was an incredibly competitive program. And so it could, it could have, they could not get enough points.
Right. So I don't want people to think April's going to be the solid date either, because if they get turned down with that application, then they have to reapply again, right?
Well, see, then now we're back to where people were under the assumption that we were going to be breaking ground soon.
Yeah. It's similar to a grant application when we go and ask the state for money to, you know, fund a project. It's a, it's a grant application. You're going to say, hey, here's all the things that we'd like to do, and you get scored on a number of points. If your project doesn't score a number of points to be competitive, you're out of the process. But if your, if your process, or if your application does score competitively and you are maybe in that top tier, you still could not even get funded for the next. But it's a gamble because you're competing against all these other processes, applications around the state. And I guess to think that you're going to break ground next spring, or if it's next April, next October, that's, that's just, that's hopeful thinking, but it's not realistic thinking, because you don't know what kind of applications are going to be going up against the state. I guess the better question would be is, once you do put an application in at the state in April, how long does it take to get an affirmative yes or no, whether or not the application is accepted?
Yeah. I agree with all of that. Commissioner Wilkins, I think you made a very good point about transparency and making sure that everybody kind of understands the process. And it might be worthwhile backing up just a second to talk about process and where we are. I think as everybody's aware, the proposed development plan includes three phases, two of which are proposed to be Lytec-funded, and one is proposed to provide more homeownership opportunities, and preferably more equitable homeownership opportunities for the city. One of the reasons that we had been talking with the development group about whether or not to pursue a development agreement immediately and really push you to sprint to the finish line so that they could submit for October 1, versus wait until spring to submit, was one, to be sure everybody on this council and in the community felt comfortable with the development proposal. And that includes not just Phase 1, but also Phases 2 and 3, to ensure that we're getting the appropriate mix of housing for all income levels. But also to ensure that we are setting this project up to be as competitive as possible. And so as Kate was alluding to, there is a very competitive scoring process for these kinds of projects. And not having site plan approval could dock them a minimum of three points, which could be the difference between getting a funding award and not getting a funding award. Now, on the other hand, as we talked about, whether or not they could be competitive, this is the first time every developer has gone through the qualified allocation plan that we have in front of us today at the state. And that's a lot of jargon, but what it means is every two years, MISTDA changes the way that they score these projects, and they have a new scoring system. So everyone is at an equal disadvantage because nobody's ever used the scoring system. By spring, we'll have a better sense of how does the scoring system work, and is it favorable to the South Haven project or not? So those two factors combined, getting the site plan approved prior to their next allocation, and having a better sense of how the qualified allocation plan was going to work, gives this development team a better shot at getting a high enough score to get funded in their first round of submission than they likely would have had if they had submitted later on at the end of this month or October 1. And so those factors, combined with the fact that there were still outstanding questions about the overall unit mix and the level of affordability for different price points, I think helped both staff and the development team to align around this idea that perhaps it's best for everybody to delay their application until spring so that we can get all of these other pieces in order, and so that they can have the most competitive application going forward.
Well stated. Thank you. So based on that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
One more thing I'd like, just to clarify, is that we're only proposing delaying the application till April, from October to April. A lot of the other deadlines that were mentioned in the purchase agreement we discussed last week, we're contemplating that those would remain in place, and that we would be bringing some form of agreement in the next, either the next meeting or the meeting after that to lock those deadlines in. Specifically, that would be bringing the PUD plan and also the brownfield plan. So we're not anticipating pushing those till after April. Instead, they would be doing those before their MISTDA application, as opposed to after, which was originally proposed. So this isn't a six-month setback in the delay, oh, sorry, in the entire process, just that MISTDA piece of the process.
Right. Everything's still moving forward. Okay. Everybody good to move on to public? Would you like a break?
No, I was going to make a motion to hold the public hearing.
To open the public hearing?
Yep.
Open.
I'm not sure if anyone's come up yet.
Yeah, no, we need to open it. We haven't opened it yet. I was trying to get that background.
That's what I'm going to do right now.
Open it up.
I'm making a motion to open a public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, second, to open the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those, no. We are open. Okay. So again, this is regarding the pilot. Questions? Comments? Come on up, state your name, state your address. You'll have five minutes. Good evening, Cam.
Good evening. Cam Doherty, 522 Edgell Street. Thank you again for taking my questions and hearing my concerns at the last meeting. And thanks to those of you who reached out to me afterwards to provide some clarity. I appreciate the additional information I received from council and others, but if I'm being completely honest, my confusion continues to grow and my concerns continue to grow around this proposal specifically. I believe before we start agreeing to developer, to any incentives to the developer on this property, we need to increase clarity and alignment on the goal of this project, and whether or not this proposal in particular meets this goal. As you're all aware, the city council priority number two is addressing housing needs, and specifically, housing needs for the missing middle in our workforce. Additionally, the development of the Overton site is stated as a means to specifically address housing opportunities for that demographic. As I mentioned at the last meeting, affordable housing is a relative term, but council has since helped me to understand that it simply relates to a metric of income to mortgage payment. I think it was 30% is what I read. And that helps to some degree, but then we have to then talk about the income ranges that we're trying to provide housing for. So seeing that missing middle and workforce were specifically called out, though not defined in the city properties, I did some additional digging. And based on meeting minutes, public comments, and some additional comments I heard, it appears what we're talking about is individual pay ranges of about $35,000 to $55,000 a year. If I'm off base on that, then let me know. But I put that range together based on starting wages for people in the public service sector, including the police department, fire and emergency services, nursing in the area, and education positions in the area. Those, all of those roles for starting income would fall into that range. As we saw in the slides presented at the last council meeting, there is now a projected number of units at each percent to AMI, or average median income, range bracket. Per job posting I saw for the South Haven Police Department, starting wage is around $52,000 a year, if that posting was correctly. I believe the current average median income for Van Buren County is $54,000, or just a hair above $54,000 a year. If that's in fact the case, that would put this officer in the 96% to AMI bracket, for which we can expect to see maybe a few more than 10 residential units based on, or rental units, based on the most recent income breakout, which, on a side note, differs from the May income breakout for this proposal. Now, that's all assuming this officer is single and has no need for more than one bedroom, because 68% of the proposed rental units for this property would be one-bedroom units. Which brings me to my next concern. I hear from council, staff, and other residents that our community is dying, and we desperately need to bring more families to the area. I absolutely could not agree more. I also agree that there needs to be affordable housing options for those families that fall into this workforce and missing middle demographic. But I don't see yet how this proposal addresses that need with 68% of the build at one-bedroom units. And then we have also, we have to also go back to the preliminary income mix table, at which point it is easy to see how few two-income families would actually qualify to live in this property. When you then add in the community concerns of density and associated safety issues, brownfield contamination, all of those items, it just continues to feel like this is not the right solution yet. I just don't think we are there yet, and that pains me, because I know firsthand of this particular need in South Haven.
Cam, you have one minute.
Yeah. Yep. And I'm eager to solve for it. But I'm also not a box checker. And pushing this through, this particular proposal, and continuing to suggest that it will help to provide affordable housing for the missing middle, I just don't think that it does that, and I think that needs to be more clear. What it looks like we're building, and if that's what we need, that's what we need, but what it looks like we're proposing with this particular project is low-income housing. Thanks.
Thanks, Cam. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Public comment?
Please, Vivek, 879 Monroe Boulevard. I just had a couple questions. One is, are we going to have another public speaking before you guys vote on it? Since we're not voting on anything now, is there going to be another public chance to talk before you do?
On the concept of a pilot, or just on the project in general, or...
No, on the pilot.
Um, do we need to have another one?
Yes, it would be coming back for adoption at some point.
Okay, with a, with a read, well, that's true, I guess we never realized, but that's true. So, yeah, there will be yet another shot, so, yeah.
That's what I wondered. And then I did have one question for you. When you were comparing, you know, this, this project, the density, the parking, stuff like that, is all comparable, could you put on the website, like, what actual communities that you're comparing it to and what projects? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just quickly, this isn't about contamination. I just would like to say that I get a sense that some people on the council, Joe and Letitia, want to push this through. I want it done correctly. And if it's done correctly and the needs get met that we're supposedly trying to meet, I'm all for the project. But I think we should learn from our mistakes in the past, that pushing things through in South Haven without really doing it the right way only leads to more problems. And I'm hoping that this is the way this council will approach this project. So that's all I have to say.
Ms. Nat, your name and address?
Oh, that's true. One more time, sorry.
Your name and address for the record.
Nancy Nat, 125 L.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
It's not to refute what she's saying, just to add. You're right. You couldn't be more right. I can't wait to get this done. You're 100% right. And I've talked to Letitia, and I've talked to other people in city council. But I will tell you without hesitation, when Ryan got up and gave the reasons why it's to our benefit, everyone in this room, for the city, for city council to make a decision, I shook my head. I'm okay with it now. I'm okay with pushing it back. If that'll make this better for the community, I'm okay. Up until Ryan spoke, I was upset, because I am the kind of person, I want something done, and I want it done today. Especially, when I look at the people in this room, some in particular that have lived for a generation as community, and they can't even have their kids live here. Every day that goes by, that's another child that may not want to live in our community, that's going to go to another community. So there is a sense of urgency. But I'm okay with it now, putting it back so all of you can get more information. And Ryan made it perfectly clear to me what the benefits are. So you won't have me fight trying to push it through. Okay? And I wasn't trying to be defensive, I just want to tell you my thinking, so you know where I stand on it.
Anybody else?
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I am more confused. Now I'm confused for the first time. Now I believe there's a lack of transparency, a little bit. So I want the council to help me feel more reassured after tonight. You have something on the, on the agenda, a light item that you've already decided, sound like you've already decided on. So, yeah. I'm all about transparency, I'm all about supporting this board, but tonight, I'm not sure where you're at. You got something on this line item, on this agenda, that you're not even addressing. Consider a motion to postpone, but you've already made your decision, sound like. That makes no sense. Now that raises a flag for me, when I'm trying to support all I can. And why didn't we invite Habitat? If all these questions are so important the council has, I know where they're coming from, but I'm talking about the councils. If your questions are such a great concern, why not invite Habitat? I'm going to go on to what I want to say tonight. I am a little, I'm not like Joe. I am a little disturbed by what I just heard. To the council, you've been facing questions on why the Overton property, the Overton project is so important, or why it should be allowed to move forward without any delay. To me, it's simple. South Haven represents a small part of a big issue that this nation is facing, and the lack of affordable housing and inadequate places to live. And even though this isn't a white and black issue, statistically speaking, the lack of affordable and adequate housing have impacted people of color and black and brown communities in much greater way, and has caused even, an even greater disparity. Now, with that being said, again, I want to say this is not a black and white issue. It's not a black and white issue. So I want to go on record in saying that. This is a lack of affordable housing issue. And I ask the council, and to all of those that are here on tonight that's opposing this project or suggesting that it be put on hold, I ask that you would at least take a moment, take a moment to step outside of your world and look beyond the bubble you live in, and to put aside your own desires, your own agendas, and recognize that everybody can't live on Monroe Boulevard. And those that can, God bless you. I don't make light of that. But I ask you to recognize that there are people everywhere that's in need of affordable and adequate housing. Therefore, the council, the council, ask the council, I just lost my place here, ask the council to at least consider, and take a moment, to consider how important this project is. From those that are opposing, I've heard their complaints over and over, especially about density, but council should ask themselves, where is that same concern and passion when it comes to density seen right across the street from the Overton, across the street from the Overton property where homes are now going up for as much as $400,000 and already being sold for short-term rental investment? And when you look around our city, in my humble opinion, short-term rentals have been the exact opposite. Short-term rental has been a grave disinvestment to our community. The council research has shown that our city does not fail its people and communities because of density. A city fails its people and community because of disinvestment. And let me remind the council, this same area where people are so concerned about, keep in mind, this is the same area at one time, the factory in the black communities, it represented the area that was redlining, disinvestment was allowed to take place. And I'm just going to close on this because I'm running out of time. Redlining hurt our community. In 1934, until finally disbanded around 1977, as a result of about 40 years of disinvestment, and the community housing blacks and brown community people were forced to live in inadequate housing, which later showed a direct impact on their health and overall living.
You've got one minute, Joe.
So, the question is not density. The problem is disinvestment. So, and asking, I'm asking this council and those that are in opposition to recognize that the Overton project represent not only an investment in our community, and our cities, and our schools, and our labor force, but it also represent a huge step in rectifying the damages that redlining has caused so many people that lived and grew up on the south side of Ward 1, where Overton property is located. And if anybody should have a voice, or a voice should be heard concerning this matter, or concerning what goes on with the property in Overton, it ought to be those that had to endure the fallout from that factory and that lived in that area. I grew up in that area, I've lived there for over 50-something years. You're worrying about the voices of a few people, but what about those that sat there and had to go through all that stuff for 40-something years, and then had to go through all the fallout of that factory being there? And they're sitting here telling you how they need a place to stay. Why not hear their voices?
Will you? Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Have you already spoke?
Aaron Tobs, 914 Center Street. And I'm just up here to say about the area. I've been there, I bought my house in 1973. I've been in the same house since 1973, had the same phone number since 1973. And, you know, I remember when property value in that area was nothing, almost nothing. And now, some of the people that grew up, some of the, my kids and grandkids, my kids, some are still there, but some of the people that grew up, when I was working, I worked in National Motor for 15 years, and all that dirt and dust. And some of the people that grew up and left there, if they want to come back now, they have, they cannot afford nothing there. Come back, they cannot afford to come back to rent, they can't afford to come back to buy. And we do need affordable houses, affordable apartments or affordable houses, because we're talking about, Pastor Wiggins said, everybody can't afford to live on Monroe Boulevard. It getting where now, everybody can't afford to live on any of that avenue because property values that went so high there. And we need affordable houses. And I would say this, and I go to my seat. I remember 35 years ago, most of the people that here wouldn't even come across Erie Street. No, I'm not pointing, I'm not pointing, I'm not pointing that, no.
Hey, Aaron.
35 years ago, most of the people that complained.
I need you to address.
Wouldn't come across, wouldn't come across Erie Street. So now, now we just trying to find, get affordable houses for people that want to come back. I'm there. I don't plan on going anywhere. And people are consoling about the $450,000 houses going up and across the street that they're going to get taxed out. And I try to explain to them, you won't get taxed out, but if you sell your home, you won't be able to come back and buy another home in that area. That's what going on now. But we do need affordable houses for people that might want to come back. Many people moved away from the 60s. After Pastor Wiggins, it was a red line. I bought, my wife and I used to own more property in the area than any African-American there. We used to own at least eight, 10, 12 properties in the area. I have paid highs, $18,000 in property taxes in a year, but we sold most of it now. But at the time, the property I got, $8,000 then, is selling for $100,000 now. So, people cannot afford to come back. The one that left and want to come back, they need a place to stay when they come back. If they don't want to buy, they need a place to rent. And they might want to come back to the area that they were raised in. And I would say this, and I'm going to my seat. There's a house on, where's the, Joe cutting him? Put that out. Cut right. When he put his house there, some years ago, probably million-dollar home, people were standing there when they were building that house, and they were there, why would this man build a house like this in this area? That area was still redlined at the time. Why would he put a house like this in that area? And he told them because he was raised there, he had the money, him and his wife, he could buy a Monroe Boulevard, he could buy anywhere he wanted to buy. But he wanted to come back to the area where he was raised at, and build his house there. And so some people want to come back to the area where they were raised at, where they worked at. Their kids might want to come back. But they need somewhere to afford to live if they want to come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
David Beanstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. Just a clarification, so the 2% pilot and the 1% municipal services, which totals 3%, that's paid by the developer, correct?
Correct.
And then I just have an observation on that. That's actually a lot. You know, if you take a $100,000 house, that would be $3,000, or a $300,000 house, that would be $9,000. So it seems to me that the city is actually getting a lot as compared to the property taxes, right?
Well, I should clarify that it's not actually the property tax, it's a percentage of the rents collected. Is that correct?
Yeah. Okay. Not on the value of the property.
Right.
Thank you.
Good question, thank you. Anybody else?
Deborah Mahone, 19 Kalamazoo Street, here in town. I just want to make one thing perfectly clear. I am not against the housing. We do need affordable housing. All of my sons have moved away from here. My grandson, who graduated in 2016, he does not live here. When I grew up, it was about 30 grandkids on Cable Street. Now it's only like three of us left here in town, three or four of us left. And it is because of housing. All I want, all I would like for you to do, and to assure us, that when you build those houses there, the apartments are there, the ground is not contaminated. We do not, I do not, want a situation like Flint where the water, they're drinking bad water, or they find out there's some type of chemical that's coming up into their homes. Because I remember when they redid the factory, and there was a, there was like a center, where you could exercise center on the end, and they had a swimming pool. They had to tear that away because of contamination. I do want affordable housing, we need affordable housing. My grandson might want to move back, my brothers might want to move back here. But everyone has to leave here to make, and then come back after they retire. We, I just want you to make sure that there is no chemicals, there is no contamination. I feel for the lady who was just up and said that she has to monitor herself to see if the cancer is spreading. I had a father die from cancer, so I understand. But please, I'm begging you, please be honest with us, generally honest, and please let us know what contamination is on that ground. And please, tell us the steps that you're going to do before anything is built, because we don't want you to have to redo over. Some people's lives, there is no redo over.
Very well said. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Almost.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. With regard to the pilot, I noticed there's reference to THC, South Haven Phase 1, blah, blah, blah. Guessing that's the Habitat company, so will that be defined exactly who that company is? It's the first I've seen of it, was in the pilot. And there has been concern raised with regard to Habitat and management from reviews online for their low-income housing project. So if this pilot proceeds forward, especially with the change that it's now just 2% and 1% is for municipality, can there be some clarification or some way to ensure that they are managing their property correctly? Because if there's issues and we have to step in to take care of that, I want to make sure that there's a way to ensure that the pilot is based on them maintaining properly the low-income housing. And with regard to this, it is based on low-income housing, which means there are income limitations. And my understanding is, Lytec is between 40 and 60% AMI. So for a single person in the South Haven area, Van Buren, income would have to be at least $21,680, but no more than $32,520. A family of three would have to have an annual household income of at least $27,880 and no more than $41,820. There are limits. And if you, if people make too much to live in low-income housing that we already have, it's my understanding they're going to make too much to live in this low housing, low-income housing. And something that I have been asking over and over again, which has not been answered, we all agree, affordable is 30% of your annual income. What is the missing middle? What is workforce? I have heard 20 to 35K. Cam said 35 to 55K. I've seen 60 to 120, or 80 to 120 AMI. What is it? Because that affects the rent, that affects what units we have, and that affects whether it's the right fit for our area, and whether someone like Shays, or a teacher, or a police officer can afford it. Because with the different distributions that have been going on, initially with the distribution before the most recent one, an officer couldn't live there. There were no 100% AMI units. I just request that everybody be transparent, tell us the specific income ranges that will be required to qualify, show us the verified income of who will qualify for what, confirm the number of units for which pilot is being requested, if there's any units that are not Lytec, and protect our community by not giving the developer every incentive that's being requested, which will then result in taxpayers having to carry the burden. It's not just for Overton, it's not just for that area, it's for all of us, and we all have to shoulder the burden. But the taxpayers should not have to shoulder the burden when you're giving discounts. And I have a handout that goes into more detail because of my limited time. I have one for each councilperson and one for staff. Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you. We'll get you back at some point in time and have another discussion about missing middle and all that. We won't do that towards the end of this, but we can have that again. Anybody else?
Mary Lynn Boggy, 70th Gabriel Drive. Actually, this, since this whole topic has actually broadened out beyond pilot, I was wondering if Mr. Kilpatrick could clarify something regarding something that Mary just said, as far as the upper limits pertaining to the type of units that are there. Could Mr. Kilpatrick comment on that, as to whether there's going to be income limits on the high side, as far as who's available for those units? Because, and I ask this because although the woman has just left, but we've heard people say about someone coming in and applying, and they earn too much money to go to any departments that were available. And so, and again, just wonder, wouldn't that also pertain to here, that someone could be earning more than what's allowed in that unit? So could you address that?
Want to come up? You can. I don't know if you want to take a shot at the missing middle question, but I know you don't have your charts, but.
Yeah. So I think this has been an issue that we've been trying to work really closely with you all in response to the concerns we've heard from the community and in partnership with the development team. So a couple of important points, and this is something I should have said earlier when I was kind of reframing the project in the phases. One of the other important elements here is the ability to income average. So the way that this works under the Lytec guidelines, developers with their projects have the ability to average the overall income restrictions at 60% AMI, which means under the HUD guidelines, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, they have the ability to have some units at 70% AMI and some at 80% AMI, and they would balance those out with units at 50% and 40% AMI. And so that's what we expected going in over the spring and early summer, as we started to enter into initial conversations with this development group. Now, we ran into an issue with a set of IRS guidelines that were issued late spring, early summer. Those IRS guidelines were specific to tax credit investors, and this gets wonky, but it's important. The IRS created a lot of concern among tax credit investors who are investing in these kinds of projects, because they made it very nerve-wracking to make an investment in a project that has income averaging. And the reason that was nerve-wracking is because they said, anytime you miss your balance, anytime you go 1% over that 60% AMI, so if you have a 40% AMI tenant who moves out, and you can't replace them the following day, then you are in violation of the IRS guidelines, and you're at risk of having to return all of that tax credit capital. So that puts all of those projects at risk if they've got 70 or 80% AMI units onboard. And so this was another reason that as we started to discuss among staff and the development team, it was important that we had units available for teachers and firefighters and police officers, and that we had units available for households earning 40 and 30% area median income. And because we have essentially poor IRS guidelines at the moment, but we anticipate that this administration will revise those IRS guidelines between now and the next round of the Lytec applications in the spring, we think we have a much better opportunity to get those income-averaged units, so that we will get some units at 70% AMI and some at 80% AMI. And that means we get units that are affordable to households earning $50,000 and $60,000 a year, not just $45,000 a year and below. So that's another important reason why, well, I think I agree with a lot of the frustration that this isn't moving forward at this exact moment. I think there are a lot of steps that still need to be taken care of, and we have an opportunity with the additional time to improve upon the project mix.
Can you, can you address incomes of 100 to 120, 80 to 120? You can have.
Sure. So what's really important from my perspective, and this is my opinion, incomes between 100 and 120% AMI, those units can get built by the private sector without any public subsidy. We're seeing them built today. I would be more than happy to work with the community to find a parcel and a development group that are willing to build market-rate housing. 100% AMI is market-rate housing. It's getting built all over the state right now with no subsidy. So if that's the income category that we really want to serve, it's probably not going to get served with rental product on this particular site, except for potentially a handful of units that might be market-rate units that are set aside in this project. I think it was alluded to earlier, there might be five to 10 market-rate units that get included in this project. But overall, if the goal is to get 100% to 120% AMI, in Michigan today, we can still build that without public subsidy.
Okay. Very well.
I just want to be clear. No, I just want to be clear. I was talking about, even the rental units for incomes, because it's not very typical. Would you have to be very completely, they're going to be high. So can you address the cost of mentioning?
So I know we don't like these back and forths, and so I'll respond to that, and then we'll stop.
Perfect. We'll wrap it.
What I want to be clear about is the MISHDA standards for Van Buren County say that for 100% AMI, 100% AMI in Van So I know we don't like these back and forths, and so I'll I'll respond to that, and then we'll we'll stop.
Perfect. We'll wrap it. Thank you.
What I want to be clear about is the MISHDA standards for Van Buren County say that for 100% AMI, 100% AMI in Van Buren County as of 2021 is $55,300 a year for a single adult or $79,000 a year for a four-person household. The rents for those kinds of units would start at $1,382 a month for a single adult or $1,975 a month for a four-person household. We can build that as market-rate rental housing. We don't need public subsidies to do that.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, anybody else?
Kate Inglbrach, 125 Elливord Street. I apologize, but I'm confused now. Am I hearing that someone who's hired as a police officer or with the Shays or with the other examples that we've given of the missing middle, that they're not going to qualify for this if they do the LITC or or the pilot or whatever those alphabet letters are?
No. Do you want to speak to it? I mean, to go through those income levels again? I mean.
It would depend on how many family members they have and how many bedrooms.
And they're not going to qualify for all of the units. We're talking about a range of income levels. So they would qualify for some of the units available. They would not qualify for every single unit available.
So if we have 50 employees here in the city that are in the missing middle theoretically from, say, $45,000 to $55,000, there's a chance that even if we build 114 units, all 50 of those people would not qualify?
I don't think the goal was ever to build a single housing project that was going to solve for all of the housing issues in the city.
Right. We've said that kind of along. This is going to get a piece of them. We will continue to look at additional opportunities. So it's going to cover a range of incomes. It's kind of what we've been talking about the whole time.
But it's it's not really going to address the missing middle that the conversation started at at the initial meetings at the high school.
It continues to be the goal of many of us is make sure there's a large percent of those units are going to hit those workforce, again, workforce housing numbers. And that's, we can flesh that out more as we go, but I'm going to use workforce.
Townhomes on top of those too, once they graduate from the rentals.
Correct.
There's townhomes on Phase Two, I think they're on.
Okay. I think the project keeps changing, and that's very frustrating.
And one thing that Ryan mentioned with these different income levels is that so you have the young teacher starting out, you know, $35,000 a year. They could work here for five years, get their master's degree, and then become the principal and get a nice raise. Well, then you you're going to kick them out? No, then they they would be able to stay because of these different levels of incomes. Or the police officer that they get passes the sergeant exam, gets an increase, gets to stay because we have these different levels of income in there.
And again, we're looking at a wide variety of, you know, you got to, I mean, look at the way salaries are moving. You're seeing starting incomes, you name it, Culvers McDonald's is starting at 12, 13 bucks an hour. That's that's what we're seeing. And I'm not, so we're trying to cover a lot of folks here. So more work to do.
Mayor, if I can, I I also think, you know, I'd at least encourage the council of course, public employees, folks who work in City Hall, teachers, police officers, Shays employees, these are all very important members of our community. But there's also a large number of folks who work in South Haven who don't make that amount of money. We have a large number of retail workers. We have a large number of restaurant workers. We have a large number of manufacturing workers who don't make that level of income. So it's not that we don't need to find housing for, yes, teachers, police officers, firefighters. But I I'd at least encourage council to not not forget that there are there are other workforce-level employees here in town.
Right. Workforce, which we continue to talk about. Very good. Anybody else before we close this out? All right, looks quiet. How about a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Motion is second to close the public hearing. All of them, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is closed. So we have an option here. I mean, we were going to postpone no matter what. We were going to do the next meeting, but we aren't ready. We don't have, this is not ready to go. It could be postponed indefinitely, or we could just take no action at this time.
I think that's the council's decision. Do you want to postpone till we can get you the information that you've been asking for about different pilots that have been done in the city? What are the different municipal services that you'd like to see covered? What is not covered by municipal services? Say, an apartment complex does not pay, does not get garbage services, milledage taxes. So they would have to pay for their own garbage. That kind of thing is the information that council have been asking for in different ways. So we'd like to give you that information. And it might be best to just say indefinitely, and we can bring that with you back at the time that we're going to bring everything else back at the same time.
All right.
I'll make a motion to postpone until we have a proposed purchase agreement with the Overton site.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion. We've got a second. Any discussion? Public, what's that?
They pretty much already discussed it.
I I would agree so, so. All right, very good. In that case, do we need public comment again on this one? We just had the public hearing, so we should be good. We're good. Motion second. All of them favor to postpone? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. New business.
Was there any nays?
Oh, sorry, nays? Sorry. I thought I heard all guesses. Sorry.
You're good. I just wondered if there was any.
You're good. Next, new business. City Council will be asked to consider the approval of the special event application 2021-28, the South Haven High School Homecoming Parade 2021 to be held this Friday, September 24, 2021, from 5:00 PM until 6:00 PM with the parade route of Kalamazoo, Phoenix, and Hubbard Streets to Radcliffe Field.
Make a motion to approve the special event 2021-28, the South Haven High School Homecoming Parade 2021.
Second. Motion second. Very good. Kate, anything exciting to tell us? It's a parade.
It's a parade, sir, and they are going to have a police escort, and they are going to be doing with a band, I believe, going with a parade route from Kalamazoo Street to Phoenix to Hubbard to Radcliffe Field. So pretty excited that this is their homecoming parade.
Good to have it back. Very good. Thanks, Ryan. Public questions or comments? Going once, going twice? Counsel questions, comments?
The one thing I would say, the the route won't be closed from 5:00 to 6:00. Just the band will, they'll muster together around 5:00. I think they step off around 5:30. If you know Jeff Bopp, who is in charge of the Purple Pride Marching Band, he runs a tight schedule.
Tight schedule. That's right.
He needs to get there for the pregame, so the road won't be closed the whole time and just be as they pass.
Anything else? Nothing. Go to the game. All right, we have a motion. We have a second to approve the special event application 2021-28. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed now. It's approved. Next, we will hear an update from our chief of police, Ms. Natalie Thompson. Thanks for hanging out. Good evening.
I will make this brief. So, thank you. Just an update on our police officer hiring process. We are finishing backgrounds this week. One of the sergeants helped our detective, and we hope to conclude those by the end of the week and then have interviews on either Friday or Monday. We will be interviewing five candidates. That is what we are down to, so I'm very hopeful, great quality. And after the interviews, hopefully, we'll be able to be making a job offer in the next couple of weeks. So that is positive. Secondly, golf cart enforcement. So from April 15th, the police department has registered 220 golf carts. From April 15th through, this would have been actually Friday, we have issued 68 citations for the season. So in comparison, last year, we issued 16 during the same time period. So different factors. I mean, the officers were encouraged to, you know, more heavily enforce golf cart violations. But also last year with COVID, a lot of numbers are out of whack. So I think this year compared to next year will be a better comparison. Next topic, enforcement. So in regards to the various speed complaints throughout the city and the township, we had implemented five different directed patrols throughout the city and the township. As always, with assistance from DPW, there were several speed studies conducted in areas where speed violations were complained about. Officers this summer have been directed to issue citations when there is a moving violation instead of just issuing a verbal warning. So for this year, from January 1st through August 1st, and this is a total number of traffic citations for anything traffic-related. This does not include the golf carts. So our total citations for traffic-related violations from January to August 1st was 307. And then in addition to those traffic citations for that time period, there were 128 arrests. And those can range from drunk driving. Our night shifts have made several drunk-driving arrests. Some of those can involve just a variety of other issues with the traffic stop that result in an arrest. So that's from January through August 1st of this year. And just with our arrest numbers, for part of January and February, there were times where our county jail was still dealing with some COVID outbreaks. So again, earlier part of this year, basically, it was difficult to arrest people. I can say that now because now the jail's open, but not something we like to advertise. But it was it was difficult to make a physical arrest. We were issuing a lot of appearance tickets. I mean, obviously felonies, we could lodge. So I would really think that next year, we can have some better comparisons for traffic citations and arrests. And this is not on my update, but I know that there were, there was some conversation about the murder that happened on July 8th, Mr. Chandel Noel. So again, thanks to the community, that case, we had, I'll say, solved by the next day. That was information from the community. And on September 1st, we were able to locate that suspect, and she is in custody. So I can tell you, in addition to a lot of the other things the officers do, we had detectives and officers literally working day and night, on the weekends, just following up on tips, working with other agencies, gathering the intelligence. So everybody, the officers, community's help was crucial. So that individual is in jail right now and pending, you know, the court processes. Next, I have a training update. So this fall, half of our department will be receiving behavioral health crisis training, which involves scenarios as well as in-house education. And I say half of the department because two years ago, the other half of our department was able to go through this training. It pretty much takes everyone off the road, so I had to kind of divvy it up half and half. So the students of this training are a diverse group. That includes police officers, medical professionals, as well as mental health workers. As I said, half of our department previously went through this training a little over a year ago. As funding was needed to continue the training program, a grant was finally approved through the West Michigan Criminal Justice Training Consortium, just that will provide more money to continue this training, which is phenomenal. And besides the other items I've talked about that our officers have been dealing with, mental health crisis has for sure, we've seen an increase in that this year. And in fact, today, for probably about three or four hours, our officers were helping with a mental health crisis and individual, a lot of issues, firearms in the house, be able to negotiate people out safely. And as I came to this meeting, I think that other officers were still out there. So incidents of that type, they take a lot of time. And the good news is, from what I was hearing, there was conversation made with this individual, and it it sounded like it was deescalating. So I'm hoping when I get out of here tonight, it'll be a good outcome. So this mental health crisis training is really, is very important for the officers. And then the last item, the merit achievement testing. I'll actually have to update you that at the next meeting because we are actually doing that this week. That starts tomorrow for the police officers. It is a, it's a voluntary physical fitness and written test. That's spelled out in their contracts. So it is kind of a motivation for officers to stay fit through the year. So they will all be participating in that this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So I think it's good incentive and motivation. And that is all that I have.
Outstanding. Any questions for the chief? I'll just say one, thank you for just sharing, I think, just that snippet about some of the mental health and some of the challenges because I think we sometimes forget that, you know, the resources that are deployed to diffuse some of these situations. And I know I hear concerns about this, that, and the other thing. But, you know, officers are out moving around, looking, policing, patrolling, putting their lives in harm's way many times. So we just have to keep that all in mind as we're seeing situations that might frustrate us that there's, you know, work is is going on. So I thank them for that. If somebody has a question or a concern about, you know, we hear concerns about cars going fast down the street, what's the best thing they should do?
So, and I know the gentleman who complained earlier about a group, and he felt maybe he or his partner were in peril. You know, for a situation like that, if you feel your safety is in jeopardy, I wouldn't take a picture or call dispatch. I mean, if you are in fear that something's going to go, call 911 for emergencies. But other than that, if people want to call dispatch, they will dispatch an officer to the area. And very often, if you give just basic information, hey, there's a red Camaro speeding up and down, ale worth. You know, chances are the officers can find that vehicle, make a traffic stop. I know Sergeant Hathaway is back here, and when he's working at night, he's, his shift is very prompt if they can respond to the area. So I would recommend if it's if it's an issue that someone feels that strongly about and would at least like to give us a chance to take enforcement action, I would advise them to call dispatch, the non-emergency number. If it's something where, you know, they're driving the wrong way down a road or you think they might be intoxicated, that's a 911 call. Because that's that's a very, that's a very serious traffic safety issue. So.
Perfect. Thank you.
I wouldn't recommend that.
For the clarification. And thanks for everything that you and your officers do every day.
Thank you.
All right. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. If anybody has any issues, come on up, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes to address your concerns.
Last stop at the podium tonight. Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I want to thank the city and the chief of police for assisting us. So I think it was last Saturday in a prayer walk in the community. It came across great. I had two questions and one final comment. One question was for Patrick, and he's gone. At what point did he realize, he's addressed this audience before, at what time did he realize that it would have been, that it would benefit Habitat to have more time? Because he sounded like he knew something more than what we knew or was privileged to. So I would like to get that feedback at some point. At what point in time did Hab, that Patrick, Mr. Patrick, have information that he apparently shared with the council that would it would benefit, and maybe Habitat, that it would benefit them to to hold off for more time? And then my other question is, did the council or did the city manager address or call Habitat? Or did Habitat call the city to ask for more time? Is that a question that could be answered tonight?
Quite honestly, I can't remember who called who first, but it was very apparent that they really need to go to the zoning approval process as part of their, as as one of the things they need to get done first. So I think that as we were kind of going through this process, there was a number of things that they wanted to get ironed out. And that's why their letter is in in the. packet here, as explanation. That's why Habitat's not here. Really, the, the information that we need to get together for the council for the pilot agreement is not for Habitat. That's something that is in the city records and, and other things that, that city has done for other developments.
Yeah, but, I know we've, we've, that's, I don't go that, we've, okay. It seems odd that they would be this late in the ballgame and realize they're so far off the plate. They're not even up to bat. Sound like they, it, it's, it's strange that they don't even realize they're on deck this late into the process. My only comment for the council is this. There's a story, we had, South Haven had a late judge that used to serve on the courts here for many years, the late Judge Woschowski. And judge served for many years on the, on the circuit board. And after every long shift, he would walk home, and the people in our community would stop and ask the judge, Judge, you want a ride? And the judge would say, he would respond by saying, no, this is, I'd rather walk, this is the way that I could deal with all the decisions I made through the day, throughout the day. He had, he made final decisions over people's lives. So that was a way he coped with all the decisions he made. I want to say this to the council. You've made an oath, you took an oath, to support and to basically support all the residents in this community. All the residents. You made a vow, an oath to do that. I just want to remind you how you have to live with the decisions you make, because there was a group of people that left tonight that felt like their voices weren't heard by anybody on this council.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else?
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. With regard to the Overton and the site plan and the planning, so now that it's looking in like, I'm, April as opposed to February, there's a little more time, so you may not know when it would be before the planning commission. But how much discretion will the planning commission have with regard to the actual site plan, the number of units? And I ask that because at one, at the presentation in June, I believe, the council inquired of Habitat about reducing the size, and they said, well, yes, we can do sixty, but no, thank you. So has, by them not coming back with another rendition with just sixty units, is that an inference that the hundred and eighteen rental units and twenty-six townhomes is an acceptable density, and that the planning commission needs to find every which way to approve this? Or how much do they get to push back? Because for parking, I mean, it go, the zoning administrator can use his own judgment. And what I've been saying is, what are the general parking requirements for the low-income housing tax credit apartments in this community to establish that the really low parking at the Overton proposed is consistent with what we have throughout our community? Because the people we want are going to be consistent with the other people at the low-income housing complexes. So I would think that they would be similarly situated with parking needs and having to drive a long distance for food. You're not going to be able to walk to get groceries. There's a nice little resident, nice little stop place across the street, but it's not Meyer, it's not Walmart, it's not Aldi's. Those all take drives. So just, I would like to ensure that there is full discretion, that they can push back on density, because the parking is too much. And with regard to open space, I certainly hope they look at usable open space and do not give credit for bioswells, for water retention. And with regard to some of the previous meetings that we've held, I've been looking at videos, and there was a joint meeting in September and another one in November 2019. And I couldn't find any minutes for the November 2019 joint meeting with affordable housing. And the reason I was looking at it is, there was a woman who spoke at the end, and I couldn't, I, her name wasn't given, so there's not a record of that, there's no minutes. She said she's been in the area with low-income housing tax credits for twenty-eight years, and she expressed concern for a complex. And it would be nice to know who that was, and they, and Mr. Kilpatrick was there and said, oh, we'll need to use you in this process. And I would love to know if she really was utilized in this process. And also, with regard to comments about building market-rate homes, I again reiterate, the Michigan Land Bank Trust, they are, from everything I've read about them, are excellent, they work with local communities, they do piecemeal or stage development, so it doesn't have to be a huge developer. And they benefit from TIF, so that it's actually very affordable to do market-income housing. And you can mix that then with low-income housing, so it's not all dense in one area. And with the Michigan Land Bank Trust, that's a government entity. We are not paying any consultant fee. And we actually have a local Van Buren Land Bank Trust seated in Papa. So that is definitely something that we should look at for market rate and not continuing high consultant fees, especially with the issue of having to postpone things because questions aren't answered. And I just need to re-stress the need to define clearly, missing middle, or workforce, or whatever term you want to use. If it walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. So please give us the ranges for the income for every single percent AMI, so we know how many units for each income with the restricted income caps of what people will be able to stay, to make sure it's the right fit. And last but not least, I had submitted a FOIA with regard to the closed session, and it's been cloaked with attorney-client privilege, but out of transparency, the council owns that privilege, and they can waive that privilege, so I would ask that you consider waiving it to do that. But at the very least, I think the minutes need to be corrected. Because they do not identify everybody who was there. I still have four minute, four seconds.
Thank you.
Ten seconds.
Anybody else?
Cam Doertie, 522 Edgell Street. Just a quick note, just wanted to echo Pastor Wilkins' comments on the prayer walk and share my appreciation to the entire city for supporting that. It was a fantastic event. Steve and I both attended. We're living in a tough time right now, and, and events like that, that bring the community together, address division and work through it together. Not only was it lovely, it was powerful. And I just encourage everybody to not only continue to support those types of events, but maybe seek them out on behalf of the community and participate in them as well. It was, it was a beautiful day. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Kate, city manager comments.
Yes, ma'am, yes, mayor. Briefly, we have this Wednesday, September 22nd, 6:00 PM, in council chambers, this room, Guy Meadows and Mike, Mark Brederland will be giving a presentation on the research that they are, that they are currently undertaking to assist with planning for resilient coastal communities. Really, this will be tying into erosion and what happens to sediment when it's, when erosion occurs. South Haven was one community that was selected because of its sandy beaches. This was one topography that, that was selected. So they'll be here this Wednesday. So additionally, their article is on the city's website, and we may try to broadcast it, but we'll see what, what we can do. Second of all, I did get some notifications that we did not have some sound on Comcast, but I think we've got that fixed. Folks did miss the first part of our meeting tonight. We do have a, the, the meeting was recorded, so it should be on our website with the streaming version. There was sound on that. Two, I have been receiving a number of concerns or STR complaints that people are missing, there's city-issued complaints, or, I'm sorry, there's city-issued permits from windows. If you're seeing a home that is a short-term rental but does not have that city-issued permit in the window, please either email me or Carol Meezak at C M E Z A K at southhavenmi.gov. We will go ahead and investigate that. That's part of our, our due diligence, making sure that people are getting the right things posted in their windows. And other than that, that's all I have, sir.
Very good. Thanks, Kate. Appreciate it. Questions?
Just a question, quick question on that.
Yes.
Black card in the wall, or the permit hanging in the wall for a short-term rental, do they have to keep that up year-round, or only when they're renting it?
No, it's year-up, it's up year-round because of now, we, we have them, they're color-coded, so we have them up year-round now.
Okay, so even if they're done renting weekly for the year, they have to have that in the window yet?
Pretty sure they have to have it up year-round, yes.
Thank you.
Question, anybody else? No. City council comments. Starting the right, Mr. Reeser.
My only comments are a couple things. First, most importantly, I, Ryan's not here, but I can't thank him enough. Every time I've talked to him on the phone, it has helped me understand this whole process. Tonight, I thought, in my opinion, he cleared up a lot of issues. I thought he gave a lot of facts. And it turned me from being upset when I walked in here about not moving fast enough to realizing the importance of moving slower. Even though I hate going all the way to April, I understand it and agree with it. So it's wonderful to have a man like that explain the whole program to us. I would say, on the other side, Pastor Wilkins mentioned not having Habitat here. In my humble opinion, the last two meetings, one of them, if not both, they should be here. There's something about looking a person in the eye when they're talking about their company and what they're going to do that's helpful, and to be able to ask a point-blank questions. And I think they missed out on an opportunity, and we should have pushed for them to be here. Other than that, thank you to the resident who's talked about the prayer walk. I was there for a second half of it, and it was wonderful. And it's just an example of some of the great leaders we have, especially on the pastoral side. It's wonderful to have people that care about the community and want to speak up and want to help the community. Thanks.
George?
So, the, the whole Overton development has received a lot of feedback, and so I'm a bit negative, and it has caused me to reflect on the process and, and what could we have done better, what could I have done better? You know, I thought getting development partners with expertise in this kind of housing was good, and I think we've learned a lot from, from those partners. I thought getting some development proposals out there, some ideas, before the property was even rezoned, I thought was a good idea and helped, I thought, was, was us being transparent about the process. But it seems like those initial ideas have now backfired, and people have used those initial ideas as though that's the final design. And I think that's one thing maybe I might do differently if I ever have the opportunity to do this differently. So I would just encourage everyone to take good notes during this time, because I'm sure this won't be the only development that we have. And I'd like us to learn from this exercise and see what we can maybe do better next time. That's it.
Well stated. Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Well, I want to say that I don't think people understand or realize how badly these are needed. I have eight adult employees right now. One of them is actually looking at going to salary with us, and they can't find a place here. Now, if they're making over fifty-two thousand a year, there are places they can find in town. There are some apartments out there. But, I don't want to give away too much, but anywhere from somebody that's making from twenty-five to forty, there's not a lot of options. So I know for a fact these are needed. I also own three apartments. Most of those people, one vehicle. Younger people, one vehicle. I think this is a great idea. I don't think we could move fast enough, but I like that we're taking our time, we're doing it right, trying to get the information out there. I think a lot of people want to put a little bit of blinders on, thinking families only. We've got to start with single people, too. We've got to bring in professionals. We're talking about police officers, teachers, but what about the retail workers, retail managers? We got a lot of restaurant employees. We have a hundred and fifty people downtown, almost at any time, working. And most people don't realize that. They think we close for the winter. We don't close. We're open. So that's one thing I want to say. That's all I have.
Well done. Appreciate it. Mr. Arnold?
No comment.
Wow. Um, no comment.
All right. Oh, you're right. There you go. What?
I'll leave it be.
Well, first off, I want to say thanks to Pastor Wilkins and some of the other area clergy that formulated the prayer walk. I, I participated in that event, and it was very, very nice. And I hope that it's something that we just, that it don't die. I hope we do it again. I hope we have a chance to do it again, and that more people will be involved in that activity. My second thing is that I just want to remind us as a community, you know, this is one of my big things, we have to realize that we are a community, and irregardless of something affects you or not, we have to see the urgency for other people. And I like what Chris said, just because it's not really affecting you, doesn't mean that it's not an urgency. And I've been in this community all my life, and I'm a second generation. And I know, you know, as a teacher, there are new teachers that are coming in who don't have a place to stay. And I heard the one lady call out my name and say, I want to push it through. Yes, I do want to push it through, not for my own personal gain, it's because I care about people, and I want to see people have housing, that need housing in this community, not just some people, but everyone. Those are my comments.
Well stated. Thank you. Okay, I'll go quick. I would also like to say thanks to Pastor Wilkins, those that participated in the prayer Go to Homecoming this Friday night, support your community. Should be a good game. Watch the parade. On housing, well stated, and it's funny, because having been here for, well, a couple years now, but this is the first time the city's taken on housing. Ever. The Housing Commission's done housing, but as a city, we're, we're kind of in uncharted territory. So I think, you know, we are listening, we continue to listen. There's a concern, we weren't going to do anything. The process will still continue. There will, you know, the wheels will continue to work forward. We've heard the concerns about Brownfield, we've heard, and we will continue to address concerns as we move forward. But we will listen, we will proceed, we will get housing done. We all want it done. Like's been said, none of us up here need a house. We've all, we're all housing secure. Most of us in the room are housing secure. We're worried about those who are insecure, who moved to this community, well, come to this community to work and can't find a house. We have to continue down that path, and we will continue down that path. We are, we are dedicated to seeing that happen. Can we be better on the processes? We can always be better. That's to be said. Last comment. So the DNR, I don't know if everybody's seen this, but it's signaling that they plan to move ahead to allow officials, you know, give people the power to ban swimming when beach conditions pose a human health and safety risk, i.e. red flag days. So, at some point in time soon, we need to have a discussion with what that means at the local level. We should probably get on the phone with Grand Haven and a few other communities. I, I think we should get through, talk about red flag, what our powers are, and I think the beach, the pier barrier concept also is one discussion needs to be had with this group, if that's of interest sooner or later. I think we should kind of dial that up while it's cold before next year shows up. So I'm glad they moved ahead. I think that gives us some help. So, on that note, thanks for coming, thanks for your comments. We're listening. I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this morning, meeting.
Second?
Motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good evening, everybody. We are adjourned.